Supervisor Carter Reese?
Uh, here. No, no, I just noticed something. We did put on the pledge, but we'll do that after anyway.
It's number two.
Number two. Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm looking at officials. Never mind. No painting taken.
Councilman Andrew.
Here.
Councilwoman Metex, here. Councilman Pradman.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Mary Sutton, here. Rich Erwin.
Here.
Maurice Duber. Diane Williams, here. William Armend.
Here.
Now we will stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Did we have anybody sign up for privilege of the four?
Hello.
You seem soft spoken, so try to get a little bit closer to the mic.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the New 4H Club in town, the Mountain Rangers. A big part of 4H is doing community service. The kids came up with doing our community garden this year. So we are here wondering if we could possibly steal a spot in the park.
Okay, I'm not opposed to it. These folks here, but how big of a spot? Where is the spot? No, just some details.
Well, we're not sure yet. We figured it would depend on if you are not sure what else to do. We were maybe wondering between in the fenced-in area?
That's the septic fields. That's...
If we don't dig into the ground, we were gonna do pallets, so it was like a raised bed type thing. I don't think the fire industry would go for that.
No.
And that's where you'd have to get permission from for to use that area.
Okay.
If you went over the fence into the park, then you're talking to the right people.
Okay. I mean, does the park come down far behind where the garb rel is? There's a little section on the other end of the walking trail.
Down to the Brian's?
Yeah.
Yeah, up to the Brian's property.
That's probably a good spot.
Yeah, so we use that area?
Yes. You're gonna turn it and then...
Um, our plan is to use pallets, so we don't have to turn throughout it all.
Okay. That'd sound better.
And then all the vegetables will put on a table for the community to use, so.
What do you want? Anything good?
We're literally in the beginning stages of this.
I've got my garden.
But it's mostly community service to teach the kids, you know?
All right. I mean, so you... And that's not a bad spot. I was thinking about also. That's where you want to do it over there? I think it's more than enough. How many kids, by the way?
Um, we have about 12, 13, yeah, that are there on a consistent basis, so. But it would be, it's a good project for them also, so. And some of the vegetables they would be able to take to the fair and show also, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, just keep us in line. Yeah.
Thank you.
Let us know how big it's gonna be and what you're doing there.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
When do we do a motion supporting it?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Do we have a second from Bob? All in favor? Any opposed? It wasn't hard.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. That's it? Okay. We, I sent you folks the March 14 meeting minutes that were adopted. And if anybody has any comments or anything like that, then... Then in that case, take a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. All right. Go to the assessors' report.
Okay. Good evening. The office is now by appointment only status until November 1st. At this time, I am working on any review and update for the tentative rolls which were to be done by May 1st. I have also to review and update the approved exemption list for star exemption holders as the state releases them. This year, after the review of this year's rolls are done, I will be working on the need, needed reviews for the 2023 schedule update on values for the town. As we discussed when Mark Los retired, he is available to work with me on this. Please let me know if you need anything in writing from him. As the county moves forward with the staff for data collection, I have been told that by real property that Colnsville will be one of the first towns to have data collection done. This will ensure that it is all updated for the 2023 update reevaluation. The full yearly report of arms length sales transfers for Colnsville totaled 42%. If anyone wants to review this, I can list or I can copy and provide one on request. Maurice, you're there.
Okay, now just add one thing to it. I had a conversation with Marie last week. And the way property and houses have been going up around here, we were at 100%. We're now at 87%. That's an indication of how the values have gone up. That doesn't mean our taxes are going to go up because we're all at 87% of what we were. So that revow will bring us back next year up to 100%. Again, people get all excited thinking that's gonna raise their taxes. It doesn't have any impact because everybody rises or goes down with the tide at the same rate. But it's just more of a commentary about how things are really going crazy in town here. On real estate, I mean, I'm here at million dollar properties now.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, I never thought I'd see that. And some people are anxious to sell, or I say, where am I gonna go if I were to sell?
Can I just ask a question? To get ahold of her then, to make an appointment, they would call this number?
And it rolls over to her?
Oh, okay.
Wherever she is. Matter of fact, it rolls over to voicemail. Voicemail and she gets it on her laptop.
Okay, because people sometimes call me and they have questions.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I get ahold of her.
I don't know what option she is on the menu, but she's there. I think number six perhaps. Okay. Need a motion to...
I'll make it.
We have a motion to accept the assessors' report and Laurie makes a second. All in favor? Any opposed? So Carrie. Code enforcement rule.
Um, I've been out running around doing some inspections, getting to know some of the local contractors. The phone's been pretty busy. It looks like people are... Spring is here, I guess, and people are getting back at it. I've been working a lot, probably, I've been trying to do five or six of the old, real old open files each week when I come around. And I'm hoping by maybe the next two weeks, that should all be cleared out. Yeah, yeah, I've been making some decent headway. A lot of people kind of just, we're kind of out of the loop, and I'm bringing them back in. Either renewing the permits or closing, doing the inspections and giving the CC or the CO. I've had a couple no permit situations and a couple complaints where I've issued some compliance orders. Haven't gotten... Well, actually I have one response back, and the rest are so recent that, you know, they probably didn't even get the certified mail yet. But I'm not really seeing any problems. There's a couple, one case in point was an old file that turned out to be being rented as a short-term rental now. So I had done a site visit on it, actually went a cleaning lady was there. And I was able to contact the owner and supply for a permit, and he's not gonna be renting it until we get the building in compliance. So, things are going well. It's just catching up so.
Okay, and that's, I'm glad you brought up that the short-term rentals, that's something that we're gonna have to address sooner or later because, as I understand it, both, we're not necessarily saying people, telling people not to do it, but as I understand it, if somebody's in that business, they're subject to a lot more stringent requirements in terms of fires and inspections and all that. And if we know they're running an operation and something happens in that place and somebody gets hurt and we knew it and didn't do any, at least tried to address it, we're parked on the hook. So that's why we're probably gonna have to put something together, short-term rental law. And I plagiarized, I've been playing with it, but I haven't gotten too far yet, but I've been plagiarizing what Peggy A. Jefferson sent me.
Sure.
I think 10 pages, a little long, but...
Covered all the bases.
Yeah, it sure does. Okay. Anything else?
Um, just a note on that, if, um, I don't know if you guys get the Association of Town Magazine that comes around. There's been a pretty good article about short-term rentals in that. And the point of it being, or one of the points is the liability that actually falls upon the town and the building department if there's a problem at one that hasn't been inspected, so.
You mean the ones that are under the radar, I don't think, and they're there?
Right.
There's a number of B and Bs or so forth in the town.
There might be more than you actually think once you're tallying them off.
I heard about Jefferson. They have like 30 or 40. And they never, never dreamed they would have that many.
We thought it doesn't mean.
Yeah. It's just a big thing, when you can get $1,500 hours for a weekend. That's a lot.
Sure.
All right. Entertained a motion to accept the code enforcement officers' report?
I'll make the motion.
Makes the motion. Carl seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Carrie. Thank you, Rich. Town clerk's report.
This month, we had four dog license renewals processed. We did have one request for original debt certificates and then an additional request for a duplicate of someone who passed a while ago. Sewer district payments, 23 of them have been received, 18 are outstanding as of right now. Although they may have, there's some envelopes that may contain the payment over the weekend. So I'm gonna start compiling the list to send over to the county. Water district payments, I think should be starting to come in pretty soon. Also, I don't see Kim, but I kind of wanna give a shout out. We had received, I received an email from a gentleman in Louisiana, I believe. And he had picked up some autograph books at a market. And they were from a Rickmeyer from here in Colnsville. And a lot of the names in it were Colnsville, Middleburg, things like that. So he wanted to get in touch with her, find out more about the people. She was in here on the weekends digging, sent him so much information. And he sent an email to me the other day, just raving about her and so grateful. And the link to a blog post that he did about it with pictures of the autograph book and everything. So if anybody wants to see that, let me know and I will email it to you because it's a fun little piece of our history that
Yeah.
we didn't really know about kind of before. We knew parts of it, but getting to see it's a little bit different, so.
So, and I think Kim is doing a fantastic job. All right. Need a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carrie. Thank you, Carrie. Diane, town clerk?
Okay. I had spent $1,486,614.97. There are 188 unpaid March penalties for $947.70.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Carrie and one from Laurie. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. Sewer district operators' report.
Okay. Average daily flow for the month was 3,207 gallons a day. Generator transfer switch is now working.
Uh, since he wrote that, they had some problems.
Kinsley Coward was on-site to repair a test. The test went well and the transfer switch works as it should. I guess. To determine cause of clogging issues, the pumps at the main pump station, some camera work has been completed on Bull Hill section. It was buildup of biofilm in the main and is believed to be a factor of the main pump station's pump failures. The next step that we recommend is to jet the Bull Hill section of the collection system. They also suggest that we select a septic holder to be on-site during the jetting to pump out the main pump station. Just that being needed. Potable water system work has been completed. There's still a brown tint to some of the water. They're currently running the water at the facility to see if it clears up. Code enforcement officer completed inspection for septic good of occupancy. List of things that needs to be addressed has been forwarded to the project manager and added to the contractor's punch list. The fire extinguishers gap in the conduit, tresses. And Rich has requested to see copies of final inspection reports for the electrical work. The electrician has fixed the two exit signs within the building and they're working as they should be. The dirty water startup for DEP has been successfully completed. And if we have any questions, free to ask Travis.
Okay. Let me just add, because he's not here, that as in any case, when you do work like this and it sits over the winter, there's a number of people who have asked to add to the punch list because I think Evergreen is back today. Okay. They've got a punch list particularly of a lot of lawns that have big rocks sticking out of them from the... And that's normal. And they're going to address that, but I guess I've got four or five calls from people, so. In any event, we'll take a motion to approve the sewer district operators' report.
I'll make the motion.
Makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Carrie seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Bill, last but not least, supervisor's report.
Um, we've been out chicken brush and ditching when the weather has permitted. Everyone, not to tell anybody, it's been raining a lot. And it's been cold and winter will let go, so that, we actually had to fix a culvert up on Pymon Road. And the ground, the first foot going down was frozen solid. And that was only two weeks ago. It's always kind of interesting. We also replaced an 18-inch culvert on Woods Road. We did some ditching there. A lot of runoff had gathered where the culvert was clogged, so that's been replaced. What's happening is a lot of the old steel culverts, the bottom literally rots out on them. And so what happens is a lot of the water starts going under the pipe instead of through the pipe, and that causes the road to collapse, literally causes the road to collapse. That's what happened up on Pymon Road. There was a five-foot by five-foot hole in the road. So we fixed that up on Pymon, fixed that up on Woods Road. The service truck went out for repair and needed a new gas tank. I'm in the process of getting quotes for gutters and downspouts to be repaired or replaced on the town garage building. And installation of an awning at the back door. In the winter, the ice is constantly sliding off the roof and crashing down next to the door. And then adding to the forges of ice that's by the door where you were and was walking. So it's a safety issue. Other drainage issues were addressed at the time up on Pangman, and we, more work needs to be done up by Stanley Slater up on Pangman Road. There's water coming up out of the middle of the road. Not so, not so bad now, but in the winter, of course, that freezes and it turns into a sheet of ice. Parker Street, we had to fix a culvert there. Those culverts were from Hurricane Irene. They were getting clogged, and so we definitely got a couple more years out of them. And up on Schmussler, that needed some ditching. The DEP notified me that up here along Potter Mountain Road, kind of in the area of the town, of the town garage opposite the bus station, Bus Repair Garage, they're gonna be doing some logging. Most recently, today, a resident called me, 906 South Mountain Road. Another steel culvert is undermining her driveway, so we have to fix that. I have to order three-foot culverts for that. And there'll be a sweeper out, I hope, starting tomorrow, sweeping the sand and salt off of all the roads from the winter. We rented it for a week, so we'll get it for a week. I thought we were gonna get it today, but we didn't. But we'll have it for a week regardless of whether, you know, spans the weekend a lot. But we have, you know, it's something we do every year.
Right.
I believe that's it.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll make the motion.
Carl makes a motion?
I'll second it.
On seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Carrie. Supervisor's county update.
Okay, everybody else is pretty short.
I am going to talk real slow. Thank you. Thank you for that introduction. Okay. I guess I will try to keep it short. It's a subject that I'm passionate about. More and more people are getting passionate on it, is renewable energy. This gets worse by the day. Not only is the state hellbound to meet very aggressive goals for renewable energy, they seem to have forgotten a few things. I found out today. Especially upstate communities, the Delaware County number was given to me, but it's probably the same as in Colnsville or Scarry County. The average, 30% of the houses in Delaware County, rural area, and we're trying to get this guy who's with the rural group, Rural Electrification Group over in Delaware to come and talk to us, but 30% of the homes only have 100 amp service. You cannot put a charger into a place with 100 amp service. It just doesn't work. I'm here, 200s, not enough. And it's absolutely incredible. They don't think of these things. They don't think about the fact that we're gonna have as much as 500,000 acres of farm or other available land taken. And by the way, we met, you still don't know what that was all about. We were asked to meet with somebody from the state. It was set up by the governor's office because they know Scarry County has been very vocal about this. And they made no bones to admit, A, they're going to do whatever they have to do to get this power. And B, every bit of this power is destined to go down to New York City. And they do have some real old legacy power plants there. And they want to get rid of them. And I understand all that, but you gotta plan this out a little bit better. They're running power down from Hydro Quebec underneath Lake Champlain and then underneath the Hudson River, never even sees us, but that's okay. It's up in Canada. That's where it came from. But they're also going to run a massive line from Delhi, I believe it is, all the way down to near the city where they'll hook up somewhere else. A lot of it will be underground. They're gonna do tunnels or pipeline. I don't know. There's also another section that's going to get the power authority involved. And they're gonna be part of this game. So what we're trying to say is...
So we're gonna hire all these companies to produce this power that we don't have an infrastructure to carry.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Exactly.
Yes. Did the cart come before the horse?
I think it's a competition between, this is not political, between the governor of California and the governor of New York trying to outdo one another.
Well, New York made it. We're the number one taxed state in the union, so we already won that one.
I know, I know. But it gets worse and worse, and we're losing our tax, property tax dollars because of it. And I don't know what they think that we can do.
Hey, we're building a football stadium. Why not?
Yeah. And I also heard today that any more natural gas installations, I think it was 2028, are no longer permitted. Can you believe that? We're sitting on top of all this natural gas. It's insane. It's absolutely insane. And again, not opposed to it, but let's do it right. Let's let our people...
I'm all for conservation. I want to save the planet too. I've got kids, grandkids. Yeah, I'd love to save the planet. Can we have a plan? Before we start pulling a blog on something, we just make it have a plan?
We're looking at it too. She said that any buses that are bought after 2027 have to be electric. So, and then all buses have to be electric by 2030, something, I don't know. And so they didn't do any studies, so NIAID, New York State Public Transportation, actually did some studies. And the power company said that they'd have to build like five nuclear power plants just to power all the buses in New York State.
And by the way, they had a very good power plant out of Washington County in the endpoint, but all the whomevers, just, I won't label them, moaned that it was dangerous. They need to shut this down, that one. And that's equal to all the power coming down from Quebec that we're gonna have to buy from out of the country.
Stupid question. Is this why our electric does up on Sky High? Does that have anything to do with it?
Not yet.
Why is that, though?
The fuel that drives that, the energy that you get in through your electric lines, well, they have to generate that somehow, so the fuel that they're buying, even natural gas, which was really cheap in a lot of places, is outrageous. Or there's some, like they said down in New York City, there's some legacy places still burning coal.
Put it in relationship to what you're putting in your car.
Yeah.
The price they charge you for gas and everything else. It's just all going through the roof.
Yes, it is. Was I too long?
No.
Okay. No, I'm not. Take a motion to accept the supervisor's Carrie report.
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? So Carrie.
Ted, Carl, second it?
All right. Let us continue. We have supervisor's February financial report, budget statement, whatever you want to call it. I sent that out to you guys Saturday. Yeah. And any comments? Corrections? Any motions moving it along?
Make a motion.
Well, second?
Sure.
Sure. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So Carrie. All right. We do have grass cutting bids for, and now this also includes the wastewater treatment facility over in West Colnsville. We have two bids, as I understand it.
Do you think we did?
Yes, pretty much. This is almost like the Carrie Awards.
I think I could do it with an elbow. Cool. Okay, this one is...
Try and make it cry.
ANA Lawn Care. Second one's from last year.
Yes, this one's from Roxbury.
No, she said ANA.
Oh, the other one's from Roxbury.
Okay. Do you want me to go line by line with this?
Yeah, if you could. It's only six or seven lines.
Okay. Colnsville Town Park, monthly bid 52980, October 3/31/13. Bell Tower Park is included in that one as well. Colnsville Town Hall and Fire Department, the monthly bid on that was 42374. And the October bid is 26484. The Beaver Hill, South Mountain, and then Hubbard and Rogers Road Cemeteries. The monthly bid is 26484 and October is 13245. The 126 Bull Hill Road Cemetery and State Route 992B. The 1141, the monthly bid on that is 39726.
And what was that again? I'm sorry.
1141 State Route 992B.
Oh, that's part of the wastewater.
It says sewer plant.
Yeah.
Oh, it says cemetery.
There is a cemetery.
Cemetery across the road.
Across from it. Oh, that's true. No, okay.
And October is 19867. West Colnsville Sewer District, a bid on that for monthly was 14128. And for October is 8830. Sewer District Septic Field and
Brush Hopping.
West Colnsville Water District was a $50 bid.
What was the, the septic fields?
An asterix.
All right. We're looking for an as-needed quote, figuring it would be two or three times a year.
As much as we would like to bid on this, we are not able to meet the requirement to do so. Our zero-turn lawn mower does not meet all the requirements. It meets the weight limit and the rear tires are 13 inches, but the front tires are eight inches. We looked around to find something even to rent and nothing meets the requirements that we can find.
All right, we'll have to address that. On the septic fields, there's a spec the DEP puts out, but Lamont also gave it to me on that is that you have to have tires that are at least 10 inches because you don't want to compact or rip up the fields. And they could not exceed 15 other pounds. Now, this is for people that are going to be tatted with water. Yeah.
Okay, so...
What's the name of this company again?
Rendler Landscaping.
Yeah, something like. He came in today while I was here and handed in his bid.
So they did their own setup over here, so. So they, they did their own setup over here, so. The Group One Park in Parquet, it's forty-five hundred for May, uh, May through September, or two thousand two hundred and fifty after, for October. Group Two, the Town Hall and Firehouse, that's gonna be forty-five hundred and two thousand respectively. Group Three, Cemeteries, twenty-five hundred monthly, twelve fifty for October. Group Four, Cemeteries, thirty-five hundred, May through September, and seventeen fifty for October. Group Five, Sewer District, four thousand and two thousand. Group Six, Sewer District Fields, seven hundred and fifty per time. Group Seven, Water District, two hundred and fifty per time.
Okay, I think I know without, but we should calculate the numbers.
Can you pass those around, please? More numbers, one more over, you can understand.
You know, if the board is okay with it, we can go on with the rest of the business and pass this around while we're talking, that's okay with you guys. They can say that, so we'll come back to that. Board of Assessment Review Appointment. Kathy Riedel, she was with us for a number of years, but she decided not to be, not to do it anymore. And thank you Kathy for John Will Dunn while you were here. And the, I ran it by a couple months ago, I think it was on February tenth, I came up with the name Connie Spanhake, who I know, and I think some of you know the Spanhakes, nice people. She's a teacher over in Jefferson, she's got a head on her shoulders. And I mean that in a very nice way. And I asked her if she was interested after I didn't hear any negative comments or alternate suggestions by members of the board. And she said, yeah, she'd like to do it. I mean, it pays thirteen twenty an hour, they only meet four hours generally a year, so. So, I would, if anybody doesn't have any objections, I, I'll make the motion for Connie to join the Board of Assessment Review. And we do have to do this tonight because there's training, I think on Wednesday or Thursday, she has to take. So, all right, Carl seconded it, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, the board.
Pass them over to the other two.
JCAP, Justice Court, I don't know what DA is, the general. It's for the, for the grant that we received to do the work here. Hand it hand up.
You skipped over C.
Over who?
C, the Bull Hill and nine ninety B pay.
Baby.
Baby.
Oh, man.
Probably on the previous page.
Done in front of me. Oh. All right, let's talk about that.
You're moving along.
You're pushing me! Anyway, yeah. As, as, as we've said earlier, Evergreen is already here. And they're doing some prep work, getting ready for paving, in addition to things they have on their punch list. And right now, this week, weather permitting, and it looks like the weather will be permitting for the most part, they're doing the ditches that need to be repaired. You'll see some spots where they had to do a trench across the road, and they, they put temporary material in there to hold it in place, but that's not satisfactory to the DOT. So they're digging that out, and they're gonna be doing some primary prep work on that going down, I don't know how deep, Nick told me, but I forgot. But they're gonna do that, and all goes according to plan. They hope next week to do, start resurfacing a paving, putting a whole new surface on that from roughly around the waterfall house all the way, oh yeah, and all the way to just past the, the house, you know, waste treatment facility. And that also includes built Bull Hill Road up to Briggs Road. So, and they're doing it, they're not hiring a paving company or anybody like that. So there will be some inconvenience, but the road will not be blocked in both ways.
DOT is gonna supervise?
They, they gave, they soup, they made sure that the specifications as to what needed to be done will, that they understood them.
Okay.
That being the case, you can bet they're gonna pay some visits. And I don't blame them, they're just looking up after, looking after their roads.
Yeah, they should.
Yeah, so it'll be busy over there, hopefully it'll be winding down, that's probably the last of the construction. But there is some, you know, there's a lot of punch list items, like the ones over in the, in the plant over there. So, anyway, that's where we, what's happening over that, over the plant. All right. Sorry, thank you very much for reminding me. Guys, slow down, stop pushing me.
Don't push so much, you know what?
But these are all quickies, I told you. All right. Highway Service Update, and this is a, and I saw a judge. John is, I see shot. Oh yeah, I checked off JCAP because you guys pushed me back. All right, JCAPs. I'm in the process of getting bids for painting, the floor, and some carpentry work that needs to be done at the judge's bench. We do have to follow the procurement policy that we have, which is identical to the state's procurement policy. So, and, and the amounts that they're coming in at doesn't necessarily require a a full-blown bid process, because they're well under twenty thousand dollars. These are different contractors. So, even if you added them all up, we're going to be well under twenty thousand dollars. But I am getting quotes for those three things separately. And I was hoping to have three quotes for the painting tonight, but one of the contractors, yeah, yeah, I'm interested, well, and give me the quote, you came in, you looked at it. Yeah, I'm interested, all right, but I haven't seen it yet, so I only have two quotes on the painting. So, we'll have to wait for that. And, and the floor, it will be sequenced. Get the painting done, and then we'll do the floor. And the carpentry work is any time, it's not a huge job, so I haven't been focusing on that. And then we'll do the, the proposal for the HVAC system, which obviously, and I agree, it would be a split system. You said one on each side, most likely.
Yeah.
Good. That's where we are on that, I don't have anything else to report. Now I'll go to the Highway Service Update.
There you go. Contract.
Great. No, John, John Riedel, who I see is on, hi John, is asked last month if we could take a look at, and, and this is a what-if right now at this point, because we're in pretty good shape, but you never know, if take a look at where we could get some assistance, either by moving or shifting some work over to the county or somewhere like that. I, I had a discussion, very brief, with Dan Crandall, who's our Commissioner of Public Works. He wasn't crazy about it, I said, well, I'm not here to try to dump this on you. All I wanted to get is some facts as to what it would take if we were ever to decide to do that. And, but since that time, guess about a week ago, I got an email from the state, I forget who it was, saying, we have four million dollars left, and we're looking for a people to submit shared services grants. And you know how we looked at, when that was in vogue a couple of years ago, we all, we'll talk to the nearest town, see what you can do? And most of the, obviously highway's the most prevalent one. And we already do a lot of mutual aid, particularly with plowing, or if a truck breaks down or anything like that. But this is specifically if you're going to engage the county to do any work. Or the county would, actually, or we would do work for the county. Shared services goes in both directions. So, this is a work in progress, I'm not gonna let it fester forever, but I do want to take a little more time to understand what that would be all about. And then just identify to the board what the options are, and that, those options could just sit ready to go if we ever needed them. I'm not saying that this time, at least I don't personally agree with doing it right now. We have a great crew. Again, though, things go south real fast. So, and I'll give John, if John's listening, I'll give him a bit, a more detailed update than these gentlemen will let me do. Okay. We also rece, we did receive a grant unexpectedly. We were told that all the money was gone, and they weren't going to do any more of this year. Jeff Laban, our, our Water District Superintendent, was talking to our county health department contact who he works with for the water system. And we got a call, long story short, we got a call last week saying, you got a grant for twenty thousand dollars to map out the Water District. And we have, we have something. You know, a lot of it's hand-drawn stuff from the nineteen twenties, the district is over a hundred years old. Well, we're gonna get a professional outfit to come in and do that. It's about twenty thousand dollars, and they are going to make it like to the inch, where everything, all the pipes are, I don't know if it's gonna show how deep they are. We have an idea where most of them are. But now we don't need an idea, if we have to dig because somebody's got a leak, we know big here, not like somewhere in this area. Which is, and I guess that wasn't as important back in the day, but it is important, especially if you need to, people are without water, or you have to cut it off for everybody that's downstream while you're doing the work. So I'm pretty excited about that, I don't have any more details, though. The Mannerkill Forest update, and this isn't, really was just a gee-whiz thing that I talked about last month, when I was saying that the county was, received a, an offer from the DEP to buy the hundred and fourteen acres in the Mannerkill Forest. And it was not, we did not go after them, meaning the county, because it's county-owned land, did not go after them looking to sell it. They, it was just, what is it worth? And they lowballed really bad. I think it was about a hundred forty, it came out to like fourteen hundred dollars an acre, which may have been a lot at one time, but it isn't anymore. And that would have been the end of it. But it wasn't, because unfortunately, there was some misunderstanding or whatever. A neighboring landowner was of the opinion that we are obligated to sell any big pieces of land, if it's county or town, if we're looking to get rid of it, to the DEP, which nothing could be further from the truth. It's, it's, it's an absentee owner, and I don't know, I think he's been talking to somebody here in town that doesn't have all the facts. But it's not true, there is nothing underhanded, as was implied. I mean, and, and long story short, we don't have any plans, meaning Scarry County, to sell it at this time, period. I mean, that might change in another year, two years, three years, I mean, it's been there so long. They are looking at doing some logging on it, harvesting, getting a few bucks for the town. But there is absolutely nothing, and frankly, I take offense when people imply that there's something underhanded going on here, that is simply false. Well, yeah, about what, fourteen, fifteen years ago?
No, about forty years ago.
Oh, well, maybe there's some good timber up there. There's a lot of red pine, and that goes up to Canada, because you're not allowed to use red pine for telephone poles in the United States, but the Canadians love them, and when they harvested it up across the view, they took out a lot of red pines, and those went straight up to Ontario and Quebec. So. What was they paying? Actually, that's all I had. It wasn't bad, was it? Not too bad. So, is, is, any of the board members have anything?
Hey, question, do we have, have we heard anything more? Like, I know the tower's turned on, and JTC, is there any scum butt going on where any of the other carriers might be interested in doing that?
Yes. Well, but I can't give you an answer as to who. There, when I spoke to my contact with the, she, AT&amp;T, Verizon, they don't manage these things. They hire somebody. Or they, or they work with somebody, and they own it, and it, it, that gets complicated, but there's an outfit up in Saratoga that manages that. And she's, she's really good, and whenever I call her with a question or ask what's going on, they come back to me, so I don't have any objection to that. She did tell me, last time I spoke to her, she, it is AT&amp;T, but they did have an application on file from somebody else that wanted to hang their equipment. I said, is that Verizon? She says, I am not permitted to tell you who it is.
Yeah.
So I don't even know what's set up, they don't share that information. But I guess if you keep an eye on the tower, and you see something that looks a little bit different, you know, it's been hung on from the, on the mast, but it's not at the top, that could be.
Yeah.
So, I, I can't tell you.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I know, I've been waiting to see if anybody had AT&amp;T could tell you what works. Everybody I seem to run into has Verizon.
Yeah, guys, I know, since it's nice now having that there. You wished it was back when it was on the season.
It was during hunting season before it did that then. And you know what, where I go-
He's happy about it, but I don't think so.
Where I go about three miles down the road, I have Verizon, I can't communicate with my kids. It's terrible.
Yeah, I'm just curious, if, you know, is the coverage good up through here with AT&amp;T?
Well, it's better, I think it's even better. It seems to be.
I don't know, my, my Verizon's horrible down through here.
Really?
Yeah.
Mine's good.
If I get, if I get to the top of the mountain, almost to the tower, and I know the tower has nothing to do with it.
You won't get anything.
As soon as you go down, you can go down through here.
A little bow down.
I've gotta get almost to West Combsville before I get served. Yeah. And then going up, up Bearfield's the same way. It's spotty up there, you get hit for a little while by Dave Cambers, and then you gotta wait till you're almost up to Hubbard Road to get it.
Really?
Well, you know the old foot phone, foot phone, or out of date.
They are. What are you talking about?
Keep it. You wanna make a motion to do an exact, what is that, what, without, what is it for? We have to say what it's for? All right. Do, do it, to address a potential negotiate, contract negotiation.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody wanna second that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Does anybody, I mean, I don't wanna tell people, come back when we're done. I'd rather be done except for this, so they don't have to hang around. You're welcome to come back for us to open up the meeting and then close it. But, does anybody have anything else you guys wanna bring up? All right, so, we can do that now, and when we come back, we'll review the invoices. And then we'll adjourn, and there's no other business that will be conducted, so rest assured.
Okay. Who seconded that?
Yeah.
All right. So, thank you for coming. But you gotta go.